It's August seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three, Tribal Office Boardroom and Virtual Conferencing. It's Kachina, Wisconsin. It's five P M. First item on the agenda is call to order and roll call. Gina Kakat, Yotsean. Dana Wabanaskum.
Yep, Sam.
Spencer Gothier. Joey Iwanape is absent, excused. Rachel Fernandez, Yotsean. Myrna Warrington.
Yotsean.
Rebecca Burnett, Yotsean. Douglas Cox is absent, excused. Dana Algrino.
Yotsean.
Alright, thank you. Alright, next item on the agenda, we have Menominee prayer, and I offered Legislative Fernandez tobacco to do our prayer tonight. Also, Mauni, we ask everyone to please put your hands together, your tobacco down, and say some healing prayers for all of our communities, our relatives, family and friends who are grieving, struggling with violence, addiction, homelessness, houseless, displaced, illness. Those that need our extra love and support, please remember our relatives who are mourning. May Creator wrap them in love and healing. Please remember our children as they prepare to go back to school soon. May we support them and help them transition back in a good and healthy way. Please remember our relatives who have missing and murdered loved ones. May we keep them in prayer and hope for answers and justice. Please remember us as we gather tonight to make important and impactful decisions. May we lead with our hearts and minds open with the intent of serving our members and communities. Amen. Thank you. Why not in for that? Alright, next item we have is public comment period. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment? Anyone virtual for public comment? Alright, hearing none, we move on. Next item on the agenda is proclamation for Mark Fuller. Mr. Fuller, if you want to come up to the table?
Gina. Gina.
Yep, go ahead, Legislative Warrington.
Yeah, I think I told you at the last meeting that we should include his service at Manasechia. And it's still not in the proclamation.
Alright. So if there's any additions, and then those will be added and corrected and turned to him. So add under the third whereas Manasechia.
How many years was he there and in the clinic?
So it was a total of twenty-nine years of public service? Okay. But you're asking to have him listed out?
It can be a total, but I wanted to mention because he did a really good job at Manasechia.
So are you asking for in the fourth whereas? Because in the third whereas is his total service, years of public service. And that's including his Manasechia time?
In the fourth whereas, yeah, it could be Menominee Tribal Clinic and Manasechia.
Okay. Okay. Was that the only change? Okay. Everybody stand up, please. Okay, whereas we, the Menominee people, are indigenous to what is now known as the state of Wisconsin. Our place of origin was at the mouth of the Menominee River, where the five clans of the Menominee were created and include the Owassa bear, Kanee eagle, Moa wolf, Mos, moose, and Otachi crane. And we continue to live on our ancestral land that was granted by the Creator. And whereas public service is truly among the noblest of endeavors for wealth, fame, and glory, seldom accompany the pursuit. And whereas throughout his twenty-nine years of public service, Mark Fuller helped the Menominee Nation through his tireless devotion and great pride in the knowledge that his deeds ultimately advanced the vital interests of the tribe, his community, and his family. And whereas in his time working for the Menominee Tribal Clinic and Manasechia, Mark helped the Menominee Nation grow into a highly self-sufficient and self-determined institution that is truly responsive to the needs of its citizens and a great reflection of the Menominee Nation's collective strength and will. And whereas Mark is widely recognized by his coworkers, community members, friends, and family as being a person of great strength and compassion, a source rich in knowledge and a reflection of those qualities that have made us resilient in our past and hopeful for our future. Now therefore, I, Gina Kakat, by virtue of the authority vested in me as the chairperson of the Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim the tribe's utmost respect and admiration for Mark Fuller for his twenty-eight years of loyal service to the Menominee Indian Tribe of Wisconsin and on his retirement on July fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. On behalf of a grateful nation, I wish Mark and his family well as they celebrate his well-deserved retirement from his selfless and honorable service. As he continues his journey through life, it is the hope and prayers of the Menominee Nation and his coworkers, both past and present, that the Great Spirit continue to guide him and his family and provide him well-deserved peace and happiness. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and caused the great seal of the Menominee Nation to be affixed, done at the Village of Kachina on the Menominee Indian Reservation. This it has the sixth day of July, two thousand and twenty-three, but today's the seventeenth of August. Signed, Gina Kakat. Alright, next item on the agenda is the appointment to Menominee Tribal Gaming Commission? So it's for one vacancy for a three-year term ending July, two thousand and twenty-six. And there's one applicant.
Madam Chair.
Legislative Warrington.
I'll make a motion to appoint Linda Kakatash for the vacancy at the Menominee Tribal Gaming Commission for a three-year term ending July, two thousand and twenty-six.
Okay, is there a second? Alright, no second, motion dies. Legislative, what do you want to do? We have a applicant. Turn your mic on so I can hear you.
I'll make a motion to repost. Second.
Okay. We have a motion to repost. Second by Legislative Gothier. Discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
Oppose.
Abstentions? Motion carried. One opposition would like to qualify?
You have a qualified applicant that applied. We should appoint her.
Alright, thank you for that. Don't vote, but I agree. Alright. So Chairman's Office post for what, another thirty days? Do you do it, or? When you repost, is it thirty days? Okay. Alright, we'll post for thirty days. Alright, next item on the agenda is the MIGO report. J R, are you on?
Madam Chair, can you hear me now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. Okay, so, good evening. Sorry, I missed last month's report. So I'm going to be reporting on May, in June, primarily, and I'm going to touch some on July. Okay, so getting right into it. The May total coin in was forty-two point five million for the month. The win was two point seven million. The guest count was fifty-one thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine. What that accounts for, average per day, the average per day coin in in May was two thousand and nine point oh-two, which was a decrease of two point four-two from April. The average win per machine per day in May was one hundred and twenty-seven point five zero, which was an increase over April by six point one-three percent. The average daily guest count playing slots in May was one thousand, six hundred and fifty-one, which was a decrease over April of one point seven. As far as June, the total coin in was forty-one point nine million. The win was two point five million. The guest count was forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-six for the month. As far as daily numbers in June, the average coin in per machine per day was two thousand, forty-six point three-five, which was an increase over May by one point eight-two percent. The average win per machine per day in June was one hundred and twenty-two point eight-six, which was a decrease from May by three point seven-eight percent. And the average daily guest count playing slots in June was one thousand, three hundred and twenty-six, which was a decrease from May by four point four-seven percent. As far as July, July, we had a very, we always have a very big month in July. This year was no exception. And actually, the numbers were quite fantastic. More like pre-COVID numbers. So yeah, the total coin in for July was forty-five point eight million. The win was two point nine million. The guest count was fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and twenty-one. As far as the daily averages for July, coin in per machine per day in July was two thousand, one hundred and eighty-seven point seven-two, which was an increase of six point four-six from June. The average win per machine per day was one hundred and forty-one point three-zero, which increased thirteen point oh-five percent over June. And the average daily guest count playing slots in July was one thousand, six hundred and forty-eight, which was an increase of nineteen point five-two percent over June. As far as marketing, we had a number of marketing events that happened in May, June, and July. The daily, I should say, the overall promo in May was actually a two-month promo that happened to start in April. April and May was the the RV There Yet promo. It concluded on Saturday, May twenty-seventh, which is when we gave away the two thousand and twenty-three KZ Connect Travel Trailer. The coin in for that night was two point four-one million. For June of two thousand and twenty-three, it was the first month of our Mustang Mayhem. And then in July of two thousand and twenty-three, we concluded that Mustang Mayhem promo on July twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty-three. The Saturday drawing for the Mustang promo produced the highest ever single MCR coin in at two point nine-six million. May Points for Prizes, we had the Martha Stewart Food Collection, Storage Collection. June Points for Prizes was the Essential Garage Collection. July Points for Prizes was the Jim Beam Griller Selection. May's entertainment included Steel River Band, Nucor, Buffalo Alice, Doug Allen Nash, who was here three nights over the Memorial Day weekend. June entertainment included Risque, Passion, Area Code. We did have Indigenous here in the Convention Center during a NATO conference. Rapture and Drive West Band. July entertainment included Melanie Best, Nucor, Bear Creek Band, and Hold On Band. Additional marketing events. In May, we had a Cinco de Mayo, Maracas of Cash promo on May fifth. Also in May, we had our VIP parties, one on May fourth, another on May eleventh, which was the Elite Party, the VIP Party for the Birch Oak and Pine around the twenty-fifth. May Mula was our table games promo. We had a Memorial Weekend Slot Tournament on May twenty-seventh and twenty-eighth. The Convention Center hosted a Mother's Day brunch on Sunday, May fourteenth. In June, we had the Summer Splash of the Cash Tables promo. We had a Father's Day promo on June eighteenth. And then in July, we had the Purple Madness, which was a tribute to Morris Day, which is the Prince Concert in our Convention Center, which went over very well. We had the Fireworks of Cash Table Games promo. And of course, our July twenty-ninth was our Mustang Mayhem, where we gave away the nineteen sixty-nine Mustang. As far as HR and staffing, in May, we employed three hundred and sixty-nine employees. Two hundred and six were full-time, one hundred and fifty-two were part-time, and we had eleven on-call. One hundred and forty-seven regular full-time enrolled Menominee, one hundred and eleven regular part-time enrolled Menominee, and nine on-call are enrolled Menominee. We have seventy-one point eight-two percent in May of our workforce was enrolled Menominee. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I unmuted you.
Okay.
Okay, go ahead, Harley.
Okay. So in May, seventy-one point eight-two percent of our workforce were enrolled in Menominee. Another six point two percent were Menominee descendants. We had twelve new hires, twenty-seven rehires in May, ten terms, twenty-one resignations. Our turnover rate for May was eight point three-eight percent, which was up two point three-five over April. The job vacancy rate for May was twelve point four-seven, or we had forty-six openings, which decreased, I'm sorry, which decreased from April by point one-three percent. Our HR department did hold a job fair in May, May tenth. We were able to offer twenty-one applicants positions. As far as June, in June, we employed three hundred and eighty employees, two hundred and ten full-time, one hundred and sixty part-time, ten on-call. One hundred and fifty-one were regular full-time enrolled Menomnies, one hundred and seventeen regular part-time enrolled Menomnies, and another eight on-call enrolled Menomnies. In June, we increased to seventy-two point six-three percent of our workforce were enrolled Menomnies and five point seven-nine percent were Menomnies descendants. We had fifteen new hires and twenty-five rehires in June, twenty-four terms, eleven resignations. In June, our turnover rate was nine point two-one percent, which was up point one-eight-three from May. The job vacancy rate for June was fourteen point six-eight percent, and we had forty-one openings, which was a decrease from May by two point two-one percent. We had another job fair in June, June nineteenth, where we were able to offer thirteen applicants positions. In June, we also recruited for a CFO, a benefits administrator, and a facilities director. And then finally, the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-two audit has been completed and is filed with NIGC and also with the state. In June, we did transfer a hundred thousand on June first. And I'm happy to announce that we did hire a new facilities director who came aboard this week. Actually, came aboard on Tuesday, August fifteenth. And we have now hired a new finance director, who will actually start on September fifth of next month. So with that, that concludes my report. So I'll entertain any questions at this time.
Thank you for that, Harley. MTL, have any questions regarding the MIGO report? So I just have a couple of things. The Annual Gaming General Council is scheduled for the August twenty-fourth.
Yes.
And it's kind of looking like MTL will not have a quorum.
Okay.
So I don't know if we want to change the date on there, see what that was the I think that was the next available availability of the conference room on that date.
Okay, do you want do you want me to check into what's the next available date?
That would, yeah, that would be helpful.
Okay, I can do that.
Did you ask right now, Gina, who's going to be able to be there?
That, I did send an email out regarding that, and That, well, I did send an email out um regarding that and um legislator Wannepan myself will be out of town and legislator Dino will be out. Um so then we'd have the two for MIGA and MTL would not have a quorum. So if we could look at um some other dates for that, that would be helpful. And then work with um the chair's office on scheduling, Harley?
Yes, definitely.
Okay. All right, uh any other questions on the MIGA report? Let's say it, Warrington. Uh I'm sorry, legislator Wannepan asked him. I'm not with it, sorry guys.
To accept the MIGA report.
I'll second. Motion by legislator Wannepan, second by legislator Dino, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carried. All right, thank you for that Harley.
Yes, thank you, have a good evening.
Okay, um next item on the agenda is the TCF SRA report. And that would be with Eva and Jeremy, right?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. There were three compliance meetings held in the third quarter, one employee license was issued, five vendor license issued, four financial servicer license were issued. In the third quarter, there were eighty-three thousand four hundred and six new loans issued and five hundred and forty-eight complaints. It was an overall complaint versus new loan percentage of point six six percent. The individual TLE percentages are broken down in your report. Seven of nine TLEs fell below the industry standard of ninety to ninety-five pass rate for calls that were monitored. Eight of nine TLEs passed the monthly internal compliance audit. One TLE had a high-rate watch list reported in their monthly internal compliance audit. Included in your report is the letter from Viking Client Services and the response letter from Jeremy Peeper, Director of Operations. Jeremy and his staff continue to work on bringing the overall ACH percentages down to fall within NACHA guidelines. Does anyone have any questions?
All right, thank you for that Eva. Legislators have any questions for her regarding the report? Any questions for Jeremy regarding the report? Looks like no questions.
Thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, yeah.
Yep, thank you.
I'll make a motion to accept the report.
Carry a motion by legislator Wannepan, second by legislator Fernandez, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions?
I'm saying.
One abstention, motion carried, does anyone qualify?
The report is on a branch of a department that I work for.
Okay, thank you for that. All right, so the next item on the agenda is the MTL motion dated June first, twenty twenty-three regarding internal audit. So it's been tabled, um and let me see, I'm gonna have to go back and think now what the status is of this motion. Um we had a company, we had a company, right? Do you remember Tony?
Um I sent up the information for a proposal, we had a hundred back from the company.
Okay.
So that's where it's at, um
Okay.
We followed through with um requesting ISN also, and apparently I heard back from internal audit that they wanted to get through our intern- our, our audit before they um did that, I guess, I don't know. So we have the work out there, we just haven't been able to get any information on somebody who can come in through this. So we're still searching for that company.
All right, thank you for that. So do we want to, um legislator Warrington, I don't know if you're able to hear, hear Tony on that, um the request for a proposal went out, but there hasn't been any response on the company to um do the, the work? So do you wanna table it again, or do you just wanna bring it back once it's completed?
Well, I, it's been dragging on too long and over the years that have gone by without it, so I think it's, we need to find out, you know, contact them to find out if they're able to do it, not just wait for them to contact us.
So do you wanna table it again?
I'd rather do another motion to ask that they um follow up and try to contact those people that you were requesting to do it. And if they can do it, did they receive the request?
They received the request, yes.
Okay.
We haven't gotten a response.
Well, you know, it might do to just try to call them and find out why not. So that would be my motion that the chairman's office try to contact that company to see if they can do this external evaluation. External audit.
Okay, there's her motion. Do you have a second?
One second, discussion.
All right, second by legislator Fernandez for discussion. Discussion. Legislator Fernandez. Where did the um RFP go, go to? Who did it go to?
Um it was a company that travel admin, um it found, so I, so
Oh, you sent the request?
Yeah, I, they have a, they have a request for a proposal within their system.
Yeah.
I filled that out and sent that to them, and that's how you start that process, and you straightened out that, but I've not heard back from that company.
Who was the company, Emery? So Emery has her hand up.
Legislator Fernandez, that would be the Internal Audit Association, they offer, I don't think it's called an audit, but it's called um something to the effect of like a um of review, and it would um review the operations to see whether there would be gaps in services, kind of like an organizational development um proposal.
Any further discussion?
Just that we really need to have this, there's too many things going on that aren't right in the operation, so we really need to have that, and that's the office that should be monitoring and checking on things, so we really need to have this.
Okay, anything further? Emery, you have your hand raised, as far as it's still raised from before?
Sorry about that, and that's the, um just for clarification, it, it would be that website, um the Institute of Internal Auditors, they offer that service.
All right, um all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carried. All right, next item on the agenda is the MTE request for MTE's formal support for the Meadow Lake Tribal Council. And we have President Skinner here with us. Do you wanna come up, have a seat at the table and push the button for the green light? Yep, there you go. All right.
Uh good evening, uh I am bringing forward uh a formal request uh from the Meadow Lake Tribal Council. They are located in northwestern Saskatchewan. Uh they reached out to MTE uh because we are very similar companies, and they had heard of our reputation, they are one hundred percent tribally owned. Their forest management is FSC certified, just as ours is. Uh they uh use the, the, the northern boreal forests uh to create two-by-fours, two-by-tens, they do dimensional lumber, um and they produce about a hundred and forty million board feet a year. Uh their Saint Timber, our lumber sales in the United States are hampered by uh the tariffs that have been placed on the, the entire Canadian softwood industry, where the United States is accusing that industry, or Canada in particular, of dumping uh cheap softwood into the United States. Uh Meadow Lake believes this is wrong, that they should be allowed to do business uh in the United States, free of these tariffs. Uh however, they have reached out to MTE uh to look at forming a partnership where we would provide the import service, uh they would provide the material, and we would bring their material into the United States and distribute. Um at no point in this process do we want train, a hundred and forty million board feet of their lumber in our mill yard, it would never reach our, our property, it would be distributed at places like Chicago and Minneapolis and some of the western distrib- distribution points. Um Meadow Lake is very similar to Menominee in other ways, uh included in the packet was a list of their social challenges that they face, uh and they're, they're very similar to ours. Uh but they have twenty-six million dollars of revenue tied up in an American tariff bank. Uh and so uh that's also part of this, they would like our support to lobby uh the United States government to correct this uh injustice. Um so on the one hand, this is a business opportunity for Menominee Tribal Enterprises. On the other hand, it's a matter for this body because they are asking for tribal level support, and, and I'm very aware that we don't do that at MTE. Uh so that's, that's why we're here. Um I can answer any questions that you might have. Uh I also, pardon me, I'm also aware that the language of their resolution is not our language for our resolution, and so um they are aware of that and they, they would like it to be a joint resolution, and so that's, uh that's their goal, is to have a joint resolution.
All right, questions from MTL? Legislator Wannepan?
Um the first question I have is getting involved with them as a business, is there anything illegal going to be? Would we get involved in any type of legal action?
Uh we will, we will have them vetted by our attorneys uh before we get involved in anything, and we will have a contract contractual arrangement. Uh but uh we have um actually found their, NorSask is their company, um and we have found NorSask lumber and mills in our area, and people have nothing but good things to say about their lumber, it is the highest quality softwood lumber some of our places have seen. Uh so I think from a reputation standpoint, um I, I, I think they're outstanding, uh but obviously we would do our homework as MTE before we get into an agreement.
Any other questions from MTL, legislator Baffia?
How, how would this benefit us?
Uh how will this benefit us? Uh it is, uh i- i- if you look at a kind of a standard five percent import fee on roughly one hundred million uh board feet of their lumber, that would equate to about three to three and a half million dollars in revenue for Menominee Tribal Enterprises. Um it will require a little bit of a, of some upskilling on our part, I'm not aware of us ever having done something like this before. Uh but we have brokered timber deals in the past, and so it's not that different uh from that. Um the increase in work is really just handling some paperwork uh to make sure that all the import stuff is handled properly and it's distributed where it needs to go when it comes to the United States. Again, we're not handling any lumber, we don't want to handle more lumber, and you know, we wanna keep that part of it real clean, we don't even want it to come to us. Uh we want it distributed right to those end users.
Um has, um Tony, has Google taken a look at the setup?
Um I, I haven't been aware, I just did talk like last week and said that we would be willing to look at it if MTL was open to this, but I was just waiting for what I think I wanted to do with it.
Okay. Let's say Dino.
Um is this gonna cost us anything? Are, does, are does MTE have to put any money into the business deal?
We have to be a willing importer, and that's really, right now, all the conversations we've had. Um they work with importers, um they would just start working with us. Um so it's, again, it's, it's building up that skill set a little bit to be that importer, making sure we have a good distribution network. Uh my sales team has already been kind of talking to buyers. There is a tremendous amount of interest in this particular company's lumber, their reputation is very good. Minimal cost to MTE, maybe the creation of an additional position to handle paperwork, uh and some legal fees as we go through the, the cooperative agreements.
Okay, so is there a, um what's the timeframe that you're looking at for a response from us?
Oh Meadow Lake, Meadow Lake would like it yesterday, um you know, they're, they're, they're really feeling that twenty-six million dollars in their bank. Um you know, I understand the schedule of the legislature and I, I, I've done my first, my professional letter of support for them. Uh the board of directors authorized me to do that. So we've started the process and there, I've communicated to Meadow Lake that our legislature has a process that they need to go to, so they knew I was gonna be here tonight, and then they're aware that there's a process to follow, and I did talk, talk with the language that they used in their uh joint proposed uh resolution, they said that's not our language, so we have to, you know, sort that out, and they knew that.
Okay, okay.
Question?
Legislator Warrington?
So Mike, you said something about your lawyers are looking into it, when are they gonna do that if you've already done a letter?
We will be looking into it before we come to any contractual agreement. But not, we will, you know, we have to work all of that preliminary stuff out. They would like us to make a visit to Canada, um and apparently winter comes pretty early in northern Saskatchewan, so the clock is very much ticking on that, otherwise we're off to the spring. And uh really, everything is at the discussion phase at the moment. And, uh, really, everything is at the discussion phase at the moment.
That's, and that was my other question, is somebody gonna visit up there to see what they have?
Uh, yeah, they would like us to visit and I will share that. I've had a couple of phone calls with them and their, a number of their chiefs have been sitting in on those, on those phone calls. So they don't have that separation that we have where, where MTE is, is a chartered entity. They don't have that. Their, their elected leaders are, are actually involved in the process. Uh, so, uh, you know, I, I think when we start talking about the trip up and really start and put those plans in place, obviously, I think we would be working with the Chairman's Office to make sure we have representation from our legislature, uh, because that's how they do business. Um, so, you know, that's just, and that's just out there. I mean, we haven't finalized anything with that yet.
I think we should do that too, is to have our, our legal look at that.
Yep. Uh, Legislature Greenough?
Um, I was just gonna say, I think we should do the letter of support or, uh, resolution right away for them? And then the business side look at that after?
No, we'd have legal review first.
Before we do the resolution?
Yeah. So if we can get a motion to send it to legal, um, for review and bring back with.
I'll make that motion to send it to legal for review and then we're passing it.
I'll make that motion to send to legal for review and bring back to the legislature.
Second. It's a good motion, second by Legislature Greenough. Discussion. Right here, none of those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed.
Yeah.
Motion carried. Okay.
Will you want me back when that motion comes back up? Just like, no, for scheduling purposes?
I think yes.
Okay. Any homework assignments from this body?
(laughing). I'm sure you will. (laughing).
Thank you.
Thank you.
You watch out for big, bigfoot up there.
(laughing). Alright, next item on the agenda is the Resolution Number Twenty-three dash forty-one, Supportive Application to the U.S. Department of Interior Bureau of Indian Affairs Living Languages Grant Program. Legislature?
Madam Chair?
Legislature Warrington?
I'll make a motion to approve Menominee Indian Tribal Wisconsin Resolution Number Twenty-three dash forty-one, Supportive Application to the U.S. Department of Interior, Interior Bureau of Indian Affairs Living Languages Grant Program. Waive the reading and approve the signatures.
Second. Thank you for that. Second by Legislature Fernandez. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Alright, um, I'm gonna ask that we, um, suspend the agenda to go to other business. Um, 'cause I'm trying to take care of some of the other business in executive session. Then I'll have to leave for the, um, wake services. So then Legislature Warrington can take over the rest of the, half of the meeting. But if we could suspend and go to other businesses, go.
Warrington?
Not with it, you guys, I'm really not. (laughing). Legislature Wabanasco, ready?
I'll make the motion to suspend the agenda and move to Other Business Number Twenty-five.
Second. Alright, uh, second by Legislature Burnett. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Alright, so we're on Number Twenty-five, Other Business Matters of immediate nature that cannot wait until the next meeting. Anyone gonna make a motion? Other Business? Legislature Greenough?
How do I, how do I start that? Move to entertain? Okay. Um, I move to entertain other business matters of immediate nature that cannot wait until the next meeting. Number one, Community Development Committee Recommendation, dated July nineteenth, twenty twenty-three, to send the proposal to MTL for the process of removal of two point nine acres of land from sustained yield for the purpose of the addition of residential lots on Non-Equit Resort South Road by two fifty-five and the creation of Safe Room Road approximately four hundred and forty feet. Number two, Menominee Conservation Commission Recommendation, dated June fifth, twenty twenty-three, to approve the twenty twenty-three ginseng regulations and forward to MTL. Number three, set special meeting of MTL for August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three in regard to the strategic plan. Number four, Ada Dear Memorial Arrangements. Number five, add to executive session by law two, section one, paragraph C, parent one, personnel matters.
What was that? Did we add this to? Yeah. Was there another one?
Uh, number six, College of Menominee Nation, twelfth annual college benefit golf outing.
Okay, that's a good motion.
Second.
Second by Legislature Warrington. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Alright, so number one is the Community Development Committee. Who is this?
I have a question about that one.
Okay.
Was MTE involved in that decision?
MTE?
Yeah, because they're taking la- land out of sustain yield?
Becky, your chair? No. And that, that was gonna be my question as well, is if they're taking it out, what are they putting back in?
Yep.
Okay. You gotta read it in?
I think we should send it back to committee to see.
Okay, well, let her, let her read it in first.
Okay.
Motion was made by Dale Kakak to send the proposal to MTL for the process of free mobile of two point nine acres of land from sustained yield for the purpose of the addition of residential lots on Non-Equit Resort South Road by two fifty-five and the creation of Safe Room Road approximately four hundred and forty feet. Seconded by Desiree, I concur.
Okay, no second necessary. Discussion. Okay, Legislature Warrington?
Um, I don't know. I hope we can just vote this down and then send it, um, back to get MTE concurrence or whatever their input is. And then like your, your, uh, issue of where are you gonna put it back?
Okay. Anything else? Legislature Greenough?
Um, I was not at this meeting, so I, I didn't hear the discussions of that. But I wish Doug was here because he probably knows the answer. Um, I, I just hate to see this get sent back and then sent around because we kind of wanna get that, that stuff going for those. Is this the tiny homes thing or is this something else?
Nope, this is a, a safe. Looks like they wanna build a safe room by the.
And that's by the trailer courts, right? Okay.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
I think there's still time yet if we send it back and it comes back to us. September. But I, I just wanna make sure that MTE is involved. We can't just be doing that, taking land out whenever we want without the input.
Okay, question's been called for. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is that agreeing to it?
What?
Is that agreeing to it?
Oh, no, 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 I'm not.
Okay.
Sorry. I know I was.
Okay, opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed, yes.
Abstentions? Alright, motion defeated. So do we want to make another motion to send it back to the committee to work with MTE?
I'll make that motion to send the issue of taking land out of sustained yield back to MTE for their input.
Second. Here, thank you for that. Second by Legislature Fernandez. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Alright, next item on the agenda is the Menominee Conservation Commission Ginseng Regulations. Legislature Chair? Jonathan On? No, it doesn't look like it. No. Okay. Legislature Greenough?
Um, I move to adopt the regulations for another year. That's what they're asking, right?
Let's see.
Approve the twenty twenty-three. Therefore, MCC is requesting MTL adopt the ginseng regulations for another year.
I'll second.
Alright, so your motion to approve the ginseng regulations and ginseng management plan for another year? For twenty twenty-three?
Yes.
Alright, second by Legislature Wabanasco. Sorry, I don't know what it is. Discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oh.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried.
Madam Chair?
Legislature Warrington?
I didn't hear that, asking for questions. I just, I know before I had asked about a report on that ginseng and how is it doing and, um, you know, is it growing more or less or how is that? Because there's some people out there that don't know what they're doing. But I wondered if conservation does, um, monitoring or evaluation of how it's doing? That's my comment.
So you're, okay. Okay. Alright. Where am I on those?
We're on number three.
Alright, so a special meeting for MTL. Looks like they're asking for August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. We have a public hearing that day. So could we do the public hearing and the strategic plan meeting? Okay, now hold on. Ann Marie, I see your hand up.
Yes, I was just gonna say, Madam Chair, that, um, we're squeezing, we're squeezing this meeting in as, um, a precautionary piece because we'll have the final, we're gonna have a draft for you, um, next week. But this is kind of like the final draft in case there's something that the legislators would like to change at that point. Um, since it's the fourth, that, that last week of the month, we thought that it would be a good idea to try and get, um, another draft in there for your review and discussion.
Okay. Alright, so we'll include it on our public hearing and then do a special meeting that day. Okay? So do you need a motion for that? I would say yeah.
Yes.
I'll make a motion for a special meeting to be on August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three at noon.
Noon?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, 'cause there's no, um, meeting that day, that's why.
Is it by five or noon?
Okay. The thirty-first at five.
So then can we change the, um, public hearing to four thirty, like?
We'll have to remember to change that when we, when we make those motions in for four thirty. Okay. Alright, who seconded that? Alright, second by Legislature Burnett. Um, discussion. Alright, Ann Marie and then Marcy.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, I forgot to lower my hand.
Okay. Alright, Marcy? Are you just waving?
Um, no, I, I had to step away from my kids because they're loud. Um, I don't know if this is, this is probably not the right time. I should actually work directly with the Chairman's Office, but since hearing that there's a public hearing coming up, uh, we would like to add the Indian Community Development Block Grants to the public hearing agenda. Um, but I'll do that with the office.
Okay.
My apologies, but just, it just came to light to me.
Okay, thank you. Alright, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Alright, next item on the agenda is the Ada Dear Memorial Arrangement. So, I received a phone call this afternoon from, um, family member of Ada and just kind of notifying us of her, kind of some of the arrangements that they're planning on taking place. Um, they will be having a memorial service with her close friends in Madison. And then UW Madison will be doing a, uh, celebrational life, um, event for her. And then they had asked if the tribe would be doing a celebrational life for her. And then the family would be having their burial after that. She will be getting cremated. Um, so he said if the tribe is going to be planning anything, that they do have time, but to keep them informed so that they can plan her burial around the same time because she will be cremated and her ashes will be up here.
They're, I thought they're spreading them in different.
Yeah.
Some are.
Yep.
Madison, some are here.
Yep. So.
Did they have a date for the UW Madison one yet?
There are these things going on. I think they said the twenty-fourth in Madison. Does anybody have ideas? Thoughts? Suggestions? Do you want the chair's office and administration to meet on it? Um, Anne Marie?
Yes, Madam Chair, uh, a question that I, I've been approached about is, um, because Ada's been such an iconic, um, you know, member of the restoration committee, um, and a former legislator is my understanding, so in, in the rules of procedure, it does address, um, administrative time off or making that available for who would like to attend the services. Um, that's the only question, input that I have received so far.
Okay. So, I, I, I think the, the family was asking, um, if the tribe would be doing a memorial service for her. Our celebration of life service, that's what they were asking. And what are we going to plan for her?
We definitely need to do something, I just don't know, like, like, how do you plan something like that?
Yeah, I don't know.
How are we gonna just contact your family and like working with the family maybe?
From.
They contacted, they contacted us.
I mean, you work with them to like figure out what that is, cause
Yeah.
it just seems odd, like exactly, like how would we, yeah, how would we do that, you know?
Right.
and I think we just need to work with the family on that.
I, I think so, because the text that Joe sent and when he says a Manominee celebration of life and then in parentheses he says need guidance from you guys on that. So I think, yeah, maybe we shouldn't kinda get together with the family and figure out kinda what they want and. So maybe we can set up like a Zoom meeting or something with chair, administration and the family or something? To figure it out.
Alright, Anne Marie?
Madam Chair, I don't, I don't have a, um, updated legislative rules of procedure, but, uh, um, maybe, maybe, um, Tony can answer. Um, did we leave that provision in there regarding, um, funerals of legislators and formal legislators and then is that still intact inside of the rules of procedure because it, it does talk about, you know, the lowering of the flags and the press statement, um, the flower donation, um, eighty dollars of tobacco for the wake service, the eagle staff and tribal flag to be transported to and from the wake service and then providing the family with a Manominee nation flag. And then it has G provide administrative leave for employees wishing to attend. But it does, uh, this may be an old copy, so I'm, you know, excuse me, but is, the final thing that it says in there is that any other cost associated with the funeral shall be the responsibility of the family of the former legislator. I, I was just stating, I was trying to help you guys, um, if that is still in the, uh, rules of procedure. And, um, just some further information, one Chief Justice Kishina had passed, the chair's office had, um, coordinated that memorial service.
Chair. I'd like to make a motion to have the chair's office and admin work together with the family and get something planned out.
I'll second. Okay. Um, discussion?
Um, for Ada Dear Memorial Service.
Okay. Let's have a go at that.
Yes.
Alright, anybody to discuss? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Alright, um, next one we have is the same, that golf outing? Is this the same one that came to us that we sent to Budget and Finance? And it was the United Budget and Finance, and then we sent it back to us?
Hmm, I don't know.
Motion by the government, this is a different one?
I, I don't remember seeing this one come to us. No.
Oh my god, I'm sorry, my mic's been off. Okay, so, this request from CMN, that's what we're trying to figure out. If this is the same one that came to us and we sent it to Budget and Finance, at Budget and Finance, Tribal Education did the sponsorship. So now is this a different CMN golf outing that's coming to us? Anyone know? They only have one golf outing, so then this one's already been taken care of? Okay.
Well, what did they do?
Well, when it came to us, we had sent it to Budget and Finance. When the request came to us, then it went to Budget and Finance.
Was that that, from that July letter that went to you?
Is that tomorrow? I don't, it's not in my packet, so I don't know what you are looking at.
Yeah.
July eleventh, yep. So then Tribal Education funded that one. Yeah, so this is already taken care of. Anne Marie?
Well, I, that's Su- Susan just asked about it yesterday if the tribe was gonna sponsor. I don't think Education did this one.
Okay, Anne Marie?
Um, Madam Chair, the one that I sent to Shannon, I did look up the motion and we did the same thing as what we did last year. I believe it was a donation of two thousand dollars and then it was, uh, um, we did the same motion as, I believe it was, uh, legislator Warrington. He wanted one adult team and one, um, youth team, so they wrote that request.
Okay, and that was for the September outing?
Yes, I'm, I'm looking in the email right now of what we sent, um, Shannon, give me a minute. Madam Chair, the, the one that was sent to, um, Education is the one from Manominee Indian School District, it's a Manominee Athletic Sponsorship Guide. So it's a different one.
So this one is different. Okay, thank you for that.
Um, I'll make a motion to send this to Budget and Finance.
Alright, motion by legislator Wabanascom, second by legislator Burnett, discussion.
So, Madam Chair, that wouldn't be in a timely manner because the, um,